Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board for Thursday, June 15, 2017. Please have the opening statement, please, Eileen.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 6, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 6, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 6, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto has been excused, or he may be late, so he said if he can get here, he will. Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick has been excused. Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse has been excused. Mr. French?
Here.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Here.
Mayor Berger?
President.
And Chairman Schneider?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and for a moment of silence in recognition of our troops serving all over, our first responders, and our police that are protecting us every day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, on one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
we have a young lady that's been with us for many years as our planner, Jennifer Beam from CME Engineering Company. Jennifer is our planner. This is her last meeting. She's going on for future endeavor, and we just want to wish her so much luck, and we are definitely going to miss her. So I'd like a round of applause from the Board and from the audience.
Thank you, guys, so much. I really have enjoyed my time here, and I will really miss all of you, truly.
I know, I know you will, so best of luck, Jennifer. I know you're going to be absolutely successful where you go.
Thank you so much.
I'd like a motion of approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 20, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 20 minutes.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 18, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of May 18.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. I have a letter from Mr. Todd Cohen regarding Lyon Holdings LLC. They are one of the applications on tonight's agenda. He has asked that that application be carried to the meeting of July 20 without further notice to the public.
If that's okay with the Board, do we have room on that night, Eileen?
Yes.
Okay, so July 20?
Yes.
Okay, application SP-1008A of Lyon Holdings LLC will be carried to the Board's July 20, 2017, meeting. There will be no further notice to property owners. If you receive the notice in the mail for this hearing, you will not receive another one. If anyone is interested in reviewing any documents for this application, you can come to Eileen's office in the Planning Department during normal business hours.
Thank you. I also have another letter from Mr. Cohen regarding Brian Hegarty, another application on tonight's agenda, and he has asked that that one be carried to the meeting of August 3 without further notice to the public. And there is room on that one as well.
Hey, Mr. Chair, case number SP-1032 of Brian Hegarty will be carried to the Board's August 3, 2017, meeting. There will be no further notice to property owners, so if you receive the notice in the mail for this application, you will not receive another one. If anyone is interested in reviewing documents, you can come down to the Planning Office during normal business hours.
I also received an email from Ms. Beam regarding the open space parks and recreation element of the master plan, and I guess Jennifer can speak more to it, but I believe that one will be carried as well.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we got comments today as late as, I think it was 2 or 3 o'clock this afternoon. We want to make sure that we're as inclusive as possible and have the ability to incorporate as many comments from the township committees as we can, so we recommended that this be put off till a subsequent meeting so we had enough time to incorporate the comments, and then those committees have time to review the updated draft.
Any idea of time?
Mr. Chair and members of the Board, this has been a very long process, and we've received multiples of comments from each committee and Board within the township. But, you know, at some point, I think we need to put a deadline on it so that we can go ahead and have the public hearing on this to let the public actually weigh in. So whatever date you select, I think we should, you know, endeavor to immediately get out the revisions to whatever Boards and committees they're going to and ask that they get their final comments in, you know, I would say like five days before the hearing, and then we just address those, if there are any more comments, you know, on the record and allow the public to finally weigh in on this.
So, Eileen, you'll confer with Mr. Russo and our planner and set a date?
Well, I would like, I would like to carry it tonight to a date certain so we don't have to renotice in the newspaper.
And our next meeting isn't till July 20, which gives everybody more than a month.
I would, if the Board would indulge me, I'd prefer it to be the first meeting in August. I'm on vacation the last two weeks in July, and I'd prefer to do that one myself rather than, you know, someone from my office subbing in, but you can select whatever date you'd like.
August 3?
Yeah, so can we do it on August 3?
That's good.
Okay. So then the master plan amendment for the open space element will be carried to the Board's August 3 meeting, 7:00 here in the main meeting room. There will be no further notice to property owners, and when we get the revisions out, I, like again, I say that we should ask the Boards and committees to get us their final comments, you know, at least five days prior to that August 3 meeting.
And the last piece of...
Mr. Chairman, with respect to that, it's a 40-some-odd-page document, and it takes a little time to digest that. I fully concur with Counsel's recommendation for a deadline, but I would like to suggest that we say two weeks prior to the August 3 date that comments have to be received on. That would give CME associates a week to disseminate and revise the document if necessary, and then give us possibly a week to actually digest it. I agree. I concur with that suggestion.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Nash.
Thank you.
The last item of correspondence, I have the Council the other night introduced 14 ordinances, which we need to let them know if they are consistent with the master plan, and I sent them to all the members yesterday, and we do not have another meeting before the Council votes to adopt these resolutions, so we need to make...
Mr. Chair, what I, what I would recommend is that Jennifer go through them one by one, and, you know, when she's finished presenting and your, the Board's finished asking any questions, we just take a vote on each one individually as to whether they're substantially consistent with the master plan. And again, I think most of you have gone through this process before, but just in case you haven't, and as well for members of the public, our role here is not to approve or disapprove of the ordinances, it is to determine whether they are substantially consistent with our master plan, and also if we have any comments, you know, on them. But we're not approving or rejecting the ordinance, our sole jurisdiction is to determine substantial consistency and to make any comments.
Do we need an individual vote for each one?
I would prefer an individual vote for each one. I think we can move through them, you know.
That's true. Now, he wants individual. You want individual?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just before we get started, Jen, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this Boards the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
It is. I do.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if we start with Ordinance 17-11, this is a reintroduction of an ordinance to establish the Reserve Mount Laurel District 2. Similarly, when we had looked at this ordinance a couple years ago, we had deemed it was consistent with the Township's master plan because it furthers the provision of providing low and moderate income housing within the township, and that's one of the goals of the Township's housing element. So I would stipulate to the Board that it is consistent with the Town's master plan, and I would submit that I would recommend that the Board refer that back to the Council.
With that, Mr. Chair, if there are any questions, and just by way of, you know, some just quick background, that ordinance was litigated. There was no decision on the merits of the ordinance. The judge found some procedural problems with the way that it was adopted, so essentially the way to remedy that is to do it again, which is what the Council has done. So, again, this is not a public hearing, so it's just for the, for the Board. If the Board's satisfied that it's substantially consistent, or that it's not substantially consistent, you know, we can take that motion, or if anybody has any questions of Jennifer, certainly, you can ask.
Okay, are there any questions? Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance...
It's to find that it's substantially consistent.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I was just going to cite the ordinance, Counsel. Ordinance 017-11, that it's substantially consistent with our master plan. Okay, Jennifer, ordinance numbers... Hold on, we got, it's a motion.
We need a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
I'm at a loss because I didn't, I don't know the entire master plan.
Well, we have a housing element fair share plan that's in place, that's an element of the Township's master plan, and one of the goals is to provide for housing for low to moderate income households. So this ordinance provides for housing for low to moderate income households, so as a result, it is consistent with that goal of the Township's master plan.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next one?
Thank you, Jen.
Ordinance 17-12 is similar. It actually rezones a portion of Block 135, Lot 26, which is a lot that fronts on Route 9 and is at the, at the intersection of Route 9 and West Farms Road. It rezone, it rezones a portion of that lot, the rear portion, from HD1 to RMLD2, which again is for the provision of affordable housing. So again, and this is not opining on the merits of the application or if an application is coming forward, it's just providing for the opportunity for low to moderate income housing, and as such, it is consistent with the Town's master plan.
Well, I would add to that, Jennifer, it's also, it's not opining on whether the actual ordinance that would implement that, you know, you approve of that.
Correct. It's just basically saying this is providing for low to moderate income housing, and there is a goal in the Town's master plan that provides for low to moderate income housing, so I would submit that this again is consistent with that.
And I just want to reiterate that none of these things are actually zoning ordinances. This is amending our master plan, which is a policy document. It informs our zoning ordinances, but this doesn't rezone anything. Eventually, the governing body, I'm sorry. It is, it is an ordinance.
It is an ordinance, but this is, your action is not approving the ordinance. It's just saying that what, the language of the ordinance is consistent with the Township's master plan.
So you can find, you know, that it's consistent with the master plan, but you may not like a setback, you know, or something like that.
And there will be a public hearing.
And there's a public hearing on that before the governing body.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any, any mayor, did you want to say something?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Jen, can I just ask?
Sure.
The ordinance, as it read, talked about a minimum parcel size of 40 acres. What is the, do you know offhand what the size of the lot is?
I wish I could read that because it, it's like microscopic. Can you read it? Give me a second. He can't read it. I knew it. It's a portion of the lot, it's not the entirety of the lot. It's the rear portion that is, I think, separated by the stream that bisects that property, so it's the rear portion, really back on West Farms Road, the front portion of the lot that's up against Route 9. I think it was like 13 acres plus or minus at the time, will remain HD1.
So we can have, we can bisect a parcel with a zoning line?
You can. Yes, you can do that. I mean, ultimately, my recommendation would be for a subdivision, which I think ultimately will happen, but yes, and there's a natural break on this lot with the stream corridor, so, you know, it's not like a regular commercial lot that's super deep and you have this fictitious line that's ambiguous. There's an actual natural feature which serves as that, as that natural boundary line.
All right, thank you. Mayor?
Jen?
Yeah.
One question. So have we done this in the past, changed an HD1 to an RMLD?
We have. There's a piece of property that's on Route 9 North in South Howell that was a subject of a Mount Laurel settlement agreement, years past, predating me, probably predating you too, Rob, that is for affordable housing purposes, yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion, then. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that ordinance 17-12 is substantially consistent with our master plan. Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, the rest of these, I think, should be easier because, as you guys all recall, at the last meeting, we had adopted the land use element amendment and the reexamination report amendment, and the balance of these ordinances are directly related to the recommendations from those documents. So 17-13, which is an ordinance dealing with accessory structures, specifically for setbacks of accessory structures, that's a direct recommendation from the reexamination report and the land use amendment, so I would submit that ordinance 17-13 is consistent with the Township's master plan.
Motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that ordinance 17-13 is consistent with our master plan. Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance 17-14 is, is again directly out of our recent reexam and land use amendment. It is the schedule that's at the, at the back of our ordinance, which identifies the permitted uses and conditional uses in each non-residential zone, so I would submit that ordinance 17-14 is consistent with the master plan.
Motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that ordinance 17-14 is consistent with our master plan.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-15, dealing with definition and requirements for pool cabanas, again, is a direct result of a recommendation from the recent reexam and land use amendment, so I would submit 17-15 is consistent with the Township's master plan.
Motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-15 is consistent with our master plan.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-16, which creates coverage requirements for the ARE1 zone, which I'm not sure why that was left out, was again a direct result of the recommendations from the recent land use amendment and reexamination report, so I would submit that it's consistent with the Township's master plan.
Roll call, please. I need a motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-16 is consistent with our master plan. Second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-17, which identifies additional uses that would be permitted within the HD3 zone, again, that comes directly out of the recommendations from our land use plan amendment and our reexamination report, and as such, I would submit that it's consistent with the Township's master plan.
Motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-17 is consistent with our master plan. Second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-18 is introducing additional uses into the HD1 zone, and again, that was a direct result of the recommendations of the land use settlement and the reexamination report, and as such, I would submit that it's consistent with the Township's master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-18 is...
19.
19, I'm sorry, is consistent with our master plan. Second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-19 is adding additional uses to the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone, which is a direct result of recommendations from the reexamination report and land use plan amendment, so as such, it's consistent with the Township's master plan.
Motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-18 is...
19.
19, I'm sorry, is consistent with our master plan. Second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-20 adds additional uses to the HC Highway Commercial Zone as a direct result of recommendations from the reexamination report and land use plan amendment, so as such, it's consistent with the Township's master plan.
Motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-20 is consistent with our master plan. Second. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-16, which creates coverage requirements for the ARE1 zone, which I'm not sure why that was left out, was again a direct result of the recommendations from the recent land use amendment and reexamination report, so I would submit that it's consistent with the Township's master plan.
Roll call, please. I need a motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-16 is consistent with our master plan. Second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 17-17, which identifies additional uses that would be permitted within the HD3 zone, again, that comes directly out of the recommendations from our land use plan amendment and our reexamination report, and as such, I would submit that it's consistent with the Township's master plan.
Motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance 17-17 is consistent with our master plan. Second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
eliminate an additional use in this zone of indoor recreation, but the concrete and asphalt aspect of the manufacturing services in this zone was vetted out at that public hearing, which was approved by the board. So this is consistent with the action that the board took at the public hearing. It's up to you how you choose to move forward, whether you choose to make comments or not, but this action, with the exception of the indoor recreation, is consistent with the actions of the board at the public hearing for the master plan.
Can we just revisit that?
Sure.
That addresses the actions, you know, specifically with regard to asphalt and concrete.
Correct.
I just want to make sure, the elimination of indoor recreation...
That was separate.
Yeah, but do you still find that that is substantially consistent?
Correct. Yes, I do.
All right, I'll motion that ordinance seventeen dash twenty-one is consistent with our master plan.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two is adding some additional uses to the planned mixed-use district, which was a direct recommendation from the reexamination report and land use plan amendment. So as such, I find consistent with the master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two is consistent with our master plan.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three adds additional uses to the HD two highway development two zone, which is a direct result of the reexamination report and land use plan amendment, as such, is consistent with the master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three is consistent with our master plan.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-four, this is an ordinance that adds definitions that we found in the master plan process were missing or a little unclear, but the definitions in this ordinance are consistent with what we put forth in the reexamination report and the land use plan amendment, and therefore is consistent with the master plan.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Jennifer and I had discussed this. On the definition for microbrewery, I would like to see a caveat added to that definition that there was no retail sales permitted.
What does that mean, retail sales?
That they don't have onsite liquor that is capable of being sold over the counter like a liquor store.
Other than micro beer?
Under the microbrewery, yes.
So you're saying you can sample beer, but you can't purchase a six-pack?
You can sample and take home whatever you make, all right? I just don't want it to turn into a liquor store.
Vodka. Oh, yeah, I get that, but they wouldn't have vodka in a brewery anyway.
Mr. Nash, or a bar, right? That was, right?
This is very important to me. I'm excited about the microbrewery thing, I'm sorry. So.
So, Counselor, how do we go about phrasing the resolution?
I'm still a little hazy. So what we don't want, because, I mean, the microbrewery, well, I guess, let's discuss what a microbrewery is, I suppose. I mean, you don't have a problem with people walking into the microbrewery, they're testing, they're learning how to create their own product, but you don't want it to become like a retail liquor store.
That's correct.
Where, you know, they have pre-prepared, you know, beer, whether they're producing it or not. It's for onsite consumption.
That's correct.
Or bringing home what you've...
What you made.
What you have made yourself.
Yes.
So would that still be considered a bar if it's onsite construction, consumption?
No, because what the definition says is that what you make...
You can drink.
You can drink it, all right? Or if you don't finish it, you certainly can bring that home.
Right.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Well, can I just make a comment? Does that mean that if you have one of those carafes, one of those bottles, you can't go in there and purchase, I don't know, fifteen, twenty ounces or whatever, even more, it's twenty-something ounces of your own bottle and bring it home? Because I know that a lot of the breweries, a lot of the local breweries now, local small microbreweries, they allow you to bring your own container, actually, it's called a carafe? I don't know what it's called.
Growler.
Growler, I'm sorry, growler.
I'm still learning, I don't...
And you can bring it home. So I want to make sure that, you know, because it really does affect the nature of the business coming here, not only our enjoyment, but as well as the business then being restricted to sell their own, because that's how they make a lot of their money, not just sampling beer, but also selling the growlers as well. So you're affecting the business aspect of it.
So at what point do you cut it off and say that they can't sell Budweisers and whatever else? I mean, you're, we're taking it from what I thought the definition of a microbrewery was, where as you come in, you learn how to make whatever the beer...
So not all, I mean, this is somebody who's new to microbreweries as well, but I still have, I still go to them once in a while. The ones I go to and visit, I don't make my own beer. They make their own beer, like, for instance, Kane Brewery, Dark City, you go there and you drink their beer, actually Beach House Brewery in Velmar, they make their own beer there, you could sample it, and you can, if you want to purchase whatever beer they sell there, you can buy it, you can buy it in a growler. Or they, some of them sell bottles now, so, but it's not like a liquor store where you can, you know, where there's an additional refrigerator in the back where you can get vodka and different types of beer, it's just the beer that they make. So if you're saying that you want to limit it to the beer they make there that's brewed onsite, I'd be for that.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
But not, well, what he said before was create the beer that you make personally.
I think, just to clarify, I think what Mr. Nash, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think what he meant was, he doesn't want to become a liquor store. So if they make beer there and they sell beer there, that's one thing, but no retail sales of product that isn't actually manufactured onsite.
Onsite, okay. Because I just wanted to clarify.
Right, that will that solve the problem?
Yes, I can agree with that.
Okay.
I agree with that.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Okay, I just need Mr. Charon to tell us how to, where the resolution.
I drink Diet Coke, so I'm just kind of catching up here. So I think it's that the ordinance is substantially consistent with the municipal master plan. The planning board does, however, make the recommendation that the township council consider revising the ordinance to clarify that sale of any product not manufactured onsite or not brewed onsite, not created onsite, whatever the word is, you know, is prohibited. I'd be fine with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that ordinance seventeen dash twenty-four, with the language that our council just said, because I can't repeat it all, is consistent with our master plan.
I'll second.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thankfully, that's all the ordinances that we have.
I thank you, Jennifer.
That's the end of correspondence.
Thank you. All right, leave.
Let's have a beer.
I think so. You buy it?
I think it's Rob's time, actually.
I would like somebody to entertain a motion to memorialize a resolution case number SP ten twenty-eight Auto Zone Northeast. It's a resolution granting preliminary major site plan. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Russo, French, Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and myself.
I'll make a motion to memorialize case SP ten twenty-eight, resolution granting preliminary major site plan.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
I'd like a motion to memorialize a resolution case number SP one zero zero eight A, Lion Holdings LLC, resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Mr. Russo, French, Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and myself.
I'll make a motion to memorialize case number SP one zero zero eight A, Lion Holdings, granting the submission waivers.
Second, please, second. Roll call.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
First order of business is a review of submission waivers before the board. Case number SP one zero three five, Joseph Wilhelm. It's a preliminary and final major site plan. The application of Joseph Wilhelm seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to demolish an existing home and construct an office building on premises known as block seventy-eight dot one zero, lot thirty-four dot zero one, to Clayton Road.
I'm not sure anybody is here. I think that's one of Mr. Cohen's applications. He looked like he was taking the night off.
No, here's another application.
Is he? Mr. Cohen, you here? I defer that to later on in the night he shows up.
I will say that I am probably the only one in this room that remembers Councilman Marvin Clayton, whose name this road was named after, who was councilman here in nineteen sixty-four, nineteen sixty-five. Anybody else? Okay, we had on air a master plan hearing that we're carrying. Before I read the next application, I just want to lay out a ground rule. When the application is going to bring up his experts, after each expert gives his testimony, I will allow anybody from the audience to come up and ask questions only. Not a testimony, no testimonials, but questions to whoever the expert is. So the first application before the board is case number SP ten thirteen, SL Homes Incorporated. It's a preliminary and final major site plan, bulk variance and woodlands management. It's the application of SL Homes Incorporated as applicant and Savino Sevo as owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance and woodlands management plan approval to construct three commercial buildings to include a shopping center and two restaurant pads on premises known as block one forty-three, lots twenty-three and twenty-four, State Highway Route nine north, just north of Casino Drive. The application of SL Homes was scheduled to be heard on December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, when it was carried to January fifth, two thousand and seventeen. After some testimony was placed on the record on January fifth, two thousand and seventeen, this application was carried to February sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, with no further notice. On February sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, this application was carried to March second, two thousand and seventeen, with no further notice. On March first, two thousand and seventeen, the application of SL Homes Incorporated was carried to May fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and on May fourth, two thousand and seventeen, was carried to May eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, with no further notice. On May eighteenth, two seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, this application was carried to tonight with no further notice. Eligible voters on this application are Mr. Husser, Nash, Russo, French, Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, Mayor Berger, and myself. Counselor?
Good evening. Jan Waters from the firm of Bathgate, Wagon and Wolf, representing the applicant. As the chairman indicated, we have previously appeared before the board, and during the course of those appearances have put testimony on the record with regard to our responses to the various engineering review letters of CME and testimony to the effect that we have, are in concurrence with their recommendations. When last we met, we were in the middle of discussing some traffic issues, specifically questions of ingress and egress off of Route nine, and the effect that that would have on interior traffic flow patterns and parking spaces. The board had requested that we go back to New Jersey Transit and try to clarify exactly what their requirement is as far as entrance and exits. We did that, and NJ DOT, rather, not Transit, NJ DOT came forward and has determined the location of the entrance and exit where they want it placed on Route nine. And as a result of that, the applicant has revised his plans to show not only what NJ DOT is requiring, but the result of that, we feel, is a better plan and a better flow through the project. In a minute, Mr. Stevens from PDS will briefly describe for you the revisions to the plans which we have submitted in response to the NJ DOT. After Mr. Stevens, then I plan to call Mr. Scott Kennel of McDonough Ray, who will then discuss the traffic plan and his traffic study as it relates to comments made by CME in their traffic letter of June second, I believe. And then lastly, tonight, I will have testimony from Brian Dubois, who has performed an endangered speeches investigation on our behalf as a result of some questions that the board had raised previously. But for the first, my first witness, I'd like to call Mr. Bill Stevens from PDS.
Mr. Waters, also, I don't think we opened it to the public the last time for questions after your, after your client's testimony, did we?
We did not.
All right, so a part of tonight will be, you know, obviously, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions regarding anything that was previously testified to. Before we get to Mr. Stevens, I just want to swear in the delegation from CME tonight. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And also, just before you get started, Mr. Waters, the approval from NJ DOT for the location of the access, was that, I mean, was that through a permit, or was there some written memorialization of that?
We'll discuss that, Mr. Stevens.
Okay, because I don't think we have anything from the DOT. We have the revised plans.
Right.
But I don't think we have anything from DOT. So, all right, Mr. Stevens, were you previously sworn?
I was.
Okay, I remind you that you remain under oath.
Thank you. This, the board may recollect William Stevens, professional engineer and planner, licensed to practice here in the state of New Jersey, vice president of Professional Design Services, where the civil engineers for the project.
Just before you proceed any further, there's, I guess, an objection from a member of the public of the ability of one of our board members to sit, I assume, due to conflict of interest as it impacts how the board is composed. Mrs. Dixiel, you have an objection to Mr. Boyle sitting...
I'm ready enough to...
No, no, you got to come up, you got to come up.
No problem.
And just, to the mic.
Do I need to swear on?
Well, you can either stay there, but just sit down so you get close to the, to the mic. You're not testifying, so you don't have to be...
You don't have to be swearing on this.
You don't have to be swearing, you're not testifying. Okay, Mrs. Dixiel, you believe that Mr. Boyle lives within two hundred feet of the subject property, is that correct?
At the last time Mr. Boyle was here, he was asked to recuse himself because he is a villagers' member, he's a board of trustees member of the villagers, or he was, and he's a member of your planning board. And being a member of your planning board, it is my opinion that his vote would be a prejudiced vote, and he should not be sitting on the planning board on this case.
I live four hundred feet from him.
It doesn't matter, we all live, we all live further than two hundred feet. I don't live two hundred feet, I'm all the way in the back. But I don't sit on the board, you do.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Boyle, are you a member of the Board of Trustees of the Villages?
No, I'm not.
You're not a member of the Board of Trustees. There is a case that came out not too long ago, I think it was probably about two years at this point. It had to do with a church that was in two hundred feet of a, of an application, and one of the board members was a member of the church. The appellate division found that because that planning board member was not in a leadership position in the church, not on their board, not, was not involved in a position of governance of the church, that that did not constitute a conflict of interest. Prior to that, many courts did find that that was a conflict, but they did, the appellate division limited it to being in a position of leadership or in the, you know, somewhere in the corporate structure of a, of a neighboring use. It sounds, Mr. Boyle, I just want to place it on the record so that it's memorialized. Number one, your lot that you own in Fee Simple is not within two hundred feet. You did not receive a notice for this hearing.
No, I did not.
Okay, just get a little closer to the...
No, I did not.
Well, just hold, Mrs. Dixiel, just give me a few moments. And secondly, you are not a member of the Board of Trustees or whatever the governing And secondly, you are not a member of the Board of Trustees or whatever the governing body of the, the villages is?
No, I am not.
Okay, is there anything else, Mrs. Dicksel?
Yes, sir. You yourself, at one previous meeting regarding this application, or whatever he sat on, that he's a, he's a resident of the villages, therefore it affects the villages, and that he should not sit on the board and vote. You yourself had him off the board one time before, so I think you should be consistent in voting now.
Well, I think I should be consistent with what the case law is, and I told you that the case law has evolved. It loosened up.
And, and the villagers did put out a robo-call to everybody in the villages today, so everybody got it.
Well, a robo-call does not, would not...
Well, that's a notice.
Okay, is what?
To me, it's a notice.
It's not a municipal land use law notice.
Okay.
I mean, under that, under that scenario, I could make sure that I pinpoint certain members of the board and make sure they get robo-calls to create the board that I want.
That's how our board did it, or does...
So, I'm just saying, that's fine, and there's nothing wrong with, with your board putting out a robo-call and informing its citizens or its residents, I just don't find that that rises to the level of a recusal. I just want to make, I just want to reiterate that there has been, you know, sort of a change in the law as the appellate division has interpreted it. And I'm, I don't wear the black robe, I just, you know, slug it out here in the trenches every night.
I respectfully disagree with you, and I respectfully request that Mr. Boyle voluntarily recuse himself in this application, as he is a resident of the villages, and whatever he votes on will affect the application. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Waters, did you want to weigh in on that?
No, Mr. Cuchero, I do not, I'll abide by your decision.
Oh, it's not my decision, that's just my recommendation.
By, by your advice.
Yes. So, Mr. Boyle, it's initially up to you as to whether you wish to, to continue or, or not.
I wish to continue.
And, Mr. Chairman, you know, if someone on the board has a, has an issue or any further questions, you know, that's for the board to, you know, to, to determine. If not, then, you know, we can, we can continue.
Is it clear for me to, Mr. Boyle should stay on the case?
Yeah, Mr. Waters?
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. As Mr. Waters said in his opening remarks, when we were last here, we were in the middle of doing our traffic testimony. We had gone through all the civil engineering testimony as part of this project at our prior hearing. The purpose of bringing you back on tonight was just to simply explain to the board what has transpired since we were here from our, our last hearing. Mr. Waters had stated that one of the concerns the board had was our access point out to Route 9 and that we should seek guidance from the NJDOT as to what they would and would not allow. There were some discussions about potential alternate access to this site. So, we did do that, we formalized our application to the NJDOT, and they came back to us and told us, basically point blank, Mr. Kennel will give more testimony on that as he had the direct discussions with the DOT. But basically what they told us is they're going to allow us one single point of access for this site, and they wanted us to move it to the south. So, we have presented to the board now revised site plans relocating the access point. Let me just refer back to my site plan. So, we have relocated the entrance to the south of the main building, so the drive aisle now lines up with the south side of the building. There will be one access point, right turns in and right turns out onto Route 9 only, and that single point of access then will guide traffic into the site. Once we reach the building, we create a one-way drive aisle which will circulate around the building, and then traffic will go back out the same way. So, it creates a one-way loop for delivery vehicles as well as providing for two-way traffic for the rest of the car traffic that would utilize the facility. It was one of the things that was actually discussed by the board, and we had talked about doing this ourselves anyway, so we, we believe that it makes for a better access point. If the board will recall, our prior drawing had, had a single point of access, but in the center of the building, which then caused vehicles to have to circulate completely around the building, and that was a concern regarding some delivery vehicles and that type of larger traffic. So, in some ways, this is a superior plan to the plan we presented before, and it does address, I believe, the circulation issues that were discussed at the last hearing by the board. Other than that, changes that we made to the plans were generally housekeeping items made to, or meant to address concerns in the prior CME review letters, the board engineers and planners and your woodland management specialist, tree person, also reviewed the drawings, and, and I believe we have gotten back a review letter from CME that indicates that the majority of the site issues, I think, on this particular property have been resolved.
Mr. Stevens, are you going to do the testimony on the truck circulation, or is Mr. Kennel going to handle it?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna finish our traffic testimony, Mr. Nash, that's where we left off when we left last time. My point in bringing this up was just to explain to the board what's been changed, so Mr. Kennel's going to give the traffic testimony.
All right, you realize that in the drawings that we have in front of us, I'm looking at the drawing that's entitled Vehicle Circulation Plan. I don't think you have the correct drawing in here. It shows the trucks egressing onto Route 9 by driving through the stalls over the curb and through the, through the grassed area.
Yes, Mr. Nash, I was painfully made aware of that mistake on the drawings by my own staff, that the circulation plan was never updated to show the new routing, but I can tell you that we have looked at that and it does fit.
So, you don't have that with you tonight?
Did I bring a revised drawing? No, we can't introduce new evidence as part of that, but we can introduce it to testimony that the circulation does work for...
Well, I mean, the, the issue, though, is if you're proceeding under Section 10B, the municipal land use law, to amplify or clarify, you know, your testimony by discussing it tonight, that's not something, though, that the board's professionals have, and the board's professionals didn't have an opportunity to conduct their own review? I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking you.
Well, no, they did, Mr. Cuchero. I think if you talk to your own board professionals, you can do that. We've even had the benefit of having...
Well, I'm, I'm just asking you, did you submit that to the board's professionals?
A revised plan, a corrected plan? No, we have not.
All right, well, that was my question. So, no, the answer is they haven't had an opportunity to review the revised plan. They don't have it.
But it doesn't exist.
The circulation plan, like you gave us revised plans, but with circulation...
Right, I just, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be clear, and I think Ms. Bem is, is clarifying that point. There's a, there's an error on our circulation drawing, which is what Mr. Nash is pointing out.
No, I understand, well, my, my...
But the revised, but the revised drawings have been submitted to the board, and your professionals have had the opportunity to review them.
But the, there is, the revised truck turning template has not been submitted.
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Cuchero, I don't, I don't see how we can move forward on this application tonight when such an important element of the site plan is, is absolutely, is presented to us incorrect.
Well, I don't know if I'd say incorrectly, but not completely. Well, the board has, has different options, it can move in that fashion. However, what the board may wish to do is to allow the testimony to continue and for questions from the public in case there's anything else, you know, that comes up that the applicant may have to address, you know, it, I wouldn't want to, everyone's here tonight, I wouldn't want to deprive them of, of coming up and asking questions, particularly if it impacts the way that the plan may have to be revised further. But that's for the board to, you know, to determine. But I think you make a good point about, you know, coming to a conclusion tonight.
How do you ask questions if I don't even see the plan? I, I, I mean, I could hear the testimony, but I can't even follow along to see...
Well, I'm just saying, there may be other things, you know, that they, that they discuss in traffic, you know, generally, but it's up to the board, it's up to the board.
I, I know.
On that drawing that Mr. Nash pointed out, the access way is mispresented, I understand that. Is it also an error that the, the projected path of these trucks along the south side of that proposed story, is that also an error? That, because it looks like the truck's gonna run over not only three or four curbs, but also that proposed one-story building.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It's, it's in error. What happens is he, the, the access drive is modeled at the wrong point.
So, it's not just the ingress and egress, it's also the...
Circulation through the site.
Circulation, yeah, okay, I just wanted to be clear. Really, I mean, the whole thing.
Agreed.
Hold on.
Mr. Boyle, please, I should be back this morning. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing from other board members is that this is a, a major concern of ours, and, and we simply can't intelligently evaluate the application with a drawing that is, is wrong and that we've had no opportunity to review. And I know there's a large contingent of people in the audience that came specifically for this application, but I, I just, I don't see how we can move forward on this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, we'd be setting a precedent I don't think we want to set.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I feel that there could be other issues that come up. You know, it's, it's that old thing that people complain with, you know, when someone's trying to build something and the engineer comes in and says, "Well, this is wrong." Then they fix it and they come back, "Well, now this is wrong." You know, I mean, if we could eliminate other, there may be other things that come up that could be addressed. If, if we just wait for this one thing, then they'll come back and say, "Okay, the truck thing is fine, but now there's another issue." So, i- if you could eliminate every other issue, I think it would make sense to, to go forward.
Mr. French, what happens if we have to, if we have concerns and the applicant has to go back and revise the site plan again, and then the people then would have to come back in additional time? It's my opinion, until they have an application that's correct, that everyone here, whether it's the board or the public, can review, I, I don't see how we can intelligently review it.
Without looking at the circulation, you could change the whole plan.
That's true, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens, also, may I ask Mr. Waters this, who is referring to you got up?
I'm sorry. The decision you got from the DOT as to where the access was going to be located, was that memorialized through a permit or a letter or something like that?
We have not received our DOT permit yet. Mr. Kennel had the correspondence with the DOT, he could answer that question more thoroughly than I can.
Do you want him to just answer at least that, that part, Clint?
Well, I mean, we, we don't have anything, so when you say that you put it where the DOT wanted you to put it, I just want something from the DOT saying, "This is where we would like it."
Let me ask Mr. Kennel, if you don't mind.
Sure, because I'd like to get that resolved, you know, tonight. Mr. Kennel, were you sworn at the last hearing?
Yes, I was.
Okay, you remain under oath.
Thank you. Yes, I had communications with Jerry Domino with NJDOT, he's the case manager on this application, and it was through an exchange of emails and also personal conversations that we determined the location of the driveway and the design of the driveway.
Is there an email from the case manager saying, "I received your plan of whatever date and..."
As I, as I recall, but I could also have it memorialized with a letter confirming, again, this application is still in the review process, so it's part of the building process in establishing the final access design.
If there's something that could be, whatever it is that you can provide, that, you know, excuse me, somehow memorialize that decision, that would be good.
Yes, because what has happened is that the last hearing, if I recall, was in January, in February, we, we received the review letter, which also requested the relocation of the driveway to where we have it.
That would be good.
And we have not resubmitted to DOT because we thought it was best to wait until we have full input from the municipality before we go back for continued review on this. So, that's why we don't have a permit. The DOT portion of it has kind of been put on hold or suspended until...
That's right.
...we have concurrence on the municipal...
Well, any, any of those other correspondence, or whatever you're talking about, would, would help out.
I can, I'll provide.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I get the sense of the board that you would prefer to postpone the discussion of the traffic and circulation plan until the revised plans have been, been submitted totally and reviewed by the professionals, which we understand.
That's correct.
I would, though, ask, so we, we will do that, and we will not go forward with that part of the testimony tonight, especially since a number of the public are here, and I know, I understand that they should have the ability to see the plans and, and respond and ask questions also. I would ask the board's indulgence, however, as to, one of my other witnesses, as part of the process during the prior hearing, we became aware of the fact that questions were asked concerning the existence of endangered species on the property, and as a result of that, we had a study conducted, which has been presented to the professionals, it's one of the exhibits in this application. The preparer of that study is here tonight, and if we could have his testimony, at least as to his findings as to endangered species, that would be helpful.
Thank you, very good.
If you, if you wouldn't mind. So, at this point, I would like to call Brian Dubois. Would you please state your name?
Sure. Brian Dubois.
And who are you involved?
Can I just swear you in first? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
And by whom are you employed?
Self-employed. My firm has ten biologists that I employ, it's Dubois Environmental Consultants. I have a Bachelor of Science in Biology and Ecology, I have over 23 years' experience doing endangered species surveys, wetland surveys. We handle projects from Maryland to New York State. We, we generally handle...
Oh, thank you. Mr. Hozar, are you satisfied?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. Mr. Dubois, did you have an occasion to perform a threatened endangered species habitat evaluation for this particular piece of property?
We did.
Would you please describe to the board the results of your project impact assessment?
Well, whenever we do these projects, obviously, we look at the locations that they're in, we look at the DEP mapping, we look at past approvals...
Please talk directly in the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. We look at, at the DEP approvals that have previously been received for the project, and when we go out to a site, we look for native species, we look for water bodies that can, that can possibly harbor the species that we're looking at. The DEP has a database, along with the landscape project, that we use commonly called the Natural Heritage Database. When we submitted that, we received a response that within a mile of the site, there was habitat for bald eagle, bobcat, and I believe wood thrush. Wood thrush is not a protected species in the state of New Jersey, it's a species of special concern, so it's a species that is in the process of having data accumulated for the, either listing or, or possible, the unlisting of, of that species. So, when we go out, we look, we look for, you know, the habitat for bald eagle, bobcat, and wood thrush, and when we came to this site, we found that it's an infill site, obviously, being on Route 9 in Howe Township. It's, it's been, I would say, severely compromised in the successional area of the site, which is primarily where the development is proposed. It's, it's got a lot of, a lot of non-native species. The tree species are primarily black locust, black willow, species that grow in successional forest, and then probably due to the proximity of the roadway, it has a, a, a good amount in the understory of Japanese knotweed, multiflora rose, there's fragmites in areas, and these are all things that we look at when we look to see if an endangered species exists at a site, because obviously, I think everyone's familiar with the fact that, you know, there's portions of the state that are, that have preferred habitat, and most of the habitat is there, and most of the species are in that habitat because it hasn't been compromised at this point. So, when we go on a site and we see Japanese knotweed everywhere, it's a very dense species, it's similar to the species you find in, in the southern states, obviously, it's in Japan, and it's a very dense species which doesn't allow for sunlight to hit the, the ground. When you look at a wood thrush, you need, you know, open canopy, obviously, native species, and just based on the, the amount of Japanese knotweed alone on the site, kind of, you know, deters wood thrush, I, I would imagine, from, from being on that site. Now, we went out there early on, we were hired to look at this project in January... We were hired to look at this project in January. We did a follow-up site visit in February. We did another site visit in April, and we did a site visit two weeks ago. Nothing's changed from the time that we went out there in January, except everything's grown in now. You can really see that the understory is nonexistent for the most part. The DEP thought so in regards to endangered species as well. They gave the site a 50-foot buffer, which means that no threatened endangered species are in the, near the water bodies of this property, in their opinion. So, you know, we didn't think it was a great site for foraging bald eagles. The fact, you know, bobcats need 17 acres, I'm sorry, 17 square miles of habitat usually in their range. They're not coming in between houses. So, we didn't think that bobcat, you know, I've done, I've testified here probably over 50 times in the last 20 years. We've never had a bobcat on a site in Howe. I think that was an old sighting, maybe an incorrect sighting, I don't know, but we didn't feel the habitat, you know, existed on this site. And that's kind of it. We agreed with the DEP. The DEP gave it an intermediate buffer, and we agreed with that. And I think that was most of the question.
Does the board have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
What is wood thrush?
It's a robin-like bird, same size, brown back, white belly, brown spots on its belly. It migrates in the wintertime. It spends the wintertime in southern Mexico and, you know, central America. It's got it figured out.
Anybody else from the board? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry if I missed something in your testimony or I didn't understand it, but how come you only focused on the two species of the bald eagle and the bobcat? What allowed you to dismiss all the other species?
We follow a database. The database is, you know, we, there's, I believe there's over 200 species of plants and animals listed in New Jersey. The DEP has a fairly good record of where most of these species are, and they publish that on what's called the Landscape Project from the DEP websites. When you go on the Landscape Project, it takes a look at what species may be on your property. That has a concurrent database that you're allowed to, you can send in a site request, and they take your map, they look at their records and see what's on there, and then they submit it back to you. So, it narrows down, you know, otherwise, these would be probably so astronomical in price that, you know, I mean, there are some sites where we'll get, we'll look at 10 to 12 species, different species, especially in the pine lands.
And if I understand correctly, you did go out and you did walk the site, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Was, to your trained eye, was there any evidence of any other endangered species?
No, no. It, you know, you could look on a map and see how close it is to other development. You know, even the villages where that site comes up to the Manasquan Rivers is fairly close. I mean, this site gets pinched off from other undeveloped pieces of property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you tell me what the DEP classified that specific site? They give classifications, I think in numbers?
Intermediate. They gave it an intermediate resource classification. Is that what you mean, or?
So, there's a number, is there a number associated with it?
Rank, there's rank one to five, and it's rank four, and that's mainly because the bald eagle is ranked, even though the bald eagle is delisted at this point, it's still protected under the eagle, sorry, the Bald and Gold Eagle, Golden Eagle Treaty Act.
So, rank five being the highest?
Yeah, rank five would be a bog turtle, which is, which means that the population is imperiled. They're ranked based on...
Just based on one typical species being on the site?
It usually gets the worst, whatever species is the worst ranked, that's what it gets. So, it gets a four because it's a bald eagle.
That's the only reason, because it's a bald eagle?
That was the reason why it gets a four.
And, so we have bald eagles in Howe?
You do.
And why wouldn't they, why couldn't the possibility be that a bald eagle would have...
Well, foraging...
Can I just underst...
Yeah.
So, the reason why you're telling me the DEP gives it a rank four is because there's a possibility or probability?
Well, we, our search is within a mile, a mile of the site. So, if there's a bald eagle nest buffer, which is a 660 linear foot buffer that is within a mile of the site, and I believe that's the reservoir, this would come up, you know, those species would come up. So, back to your question, where, how do they get the list? They cast a wide net. Any species habitat or forest patch of a certain, of a particular species would come up as a ranking. And so, even though we're a mile away from habitat, it comes up with that classification. So, and then to further on your question, so when we look at, we have, one of the things my company does is we get involved with bald eagle relocation projects. We have several of them going on right now. And the way the state works with bald eagles is they give the nest a 660-foot, I'm sorry, yeah, 660-foot buffer around the nest, which means you can't, you know, you wouldn't be allowed to develop within that buffer, you know, any of that. And then after that, there's a foraging buffer. It's a line of sight buffer. I've done work on property near the reservoir, and I think those folks have put those lands in preservation at this point. If I, if I'm not mistaken, it was years ago. But because they're within 660-foot of a, you know, a nest. So, our site is much farther than that. So, then you would look at foraging. So, eagles forage on carrion. They're opportunistic. They, you know, they'll perch around open water. So, when we look at open water streams, like the Manasquan, you look at how open the canopy is and how wide, how deep it is. Is that, is that river holding, you know, fish that forage up near the top, so on and so forth? So, when you look at this site, and again, kind of going back to the invasive species that have kind of, you know, taken over that little bit of an area, it's, that river's not particularly wide there. And there were no purchase or snags as you go down. You know, I don't trespass on anyone's land, but as I got out towards the more open, you know, where the property ends, there's a, there's an overstory over the river. Those are big birds, you know, sometimes they have seven-foot wingspans. They need room to move, and I didn't feel like it was there.
Is it your testimony today that a bald eagle would most likely not relocate to that location?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there would be no reason. There's no open water. You, you, you know, we've done this a lot, and you'll, you'll find these birds within so many foot of a, you know, the tree diameter is a, is a big one, you know, the girth of a tree.
I know nothing about
I'm just letting you know.
relocation of birds or anything like that, but I know that they, they fly, they move around.
Yeah, absolutely.
They, you know, they have a nest here, they have a nest there, they die off, and then, you know, their babies have another, so that's all I know, but...
I had a meeting last week at the seventh floor of DEP over a couple bald eagle issues because there's obviously more and more bald eagles, and they are delisted. So, what happens is, is the studies that we've looked at, the projects we've been involved with, there's two things that lure. It's open water and proximity to open water, like the reservoir, and tree diameter. So, they're big nests, very large nests.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, I'm sorry. And I don't want to belabor this.
No, it's fine.
Did your report get submitted to the...
Mm-hmm, I did that, and we did an environmental impact statement.
It's in our package.
We provided two reports.
Exhibit five.
Thank you.
It's exhibit 820.
It would be linked to a document distribution list.
Yeah, document distribution.
So, in a rank four, there's probably, I'm going to say 50, 60 species that...
No.
How many?
Oh, I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. I can look into it, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Because I'm just concerned that, you know, from the testimony I'm hearing, bald eagle, bobcat.
Yeah.
But if I recall through the years, the list was pretty extensive of endangered species that...
Well, I said it.
Especially in the rank four.
Yeah, I don't know where you're getting that from, but there's over 200 species, I believe, that are listed in New Jersey. And when you go to more rural areas, you'll do an NHP like we did or pull the landscape, and you'll get 10 species. You know, there's very, very few sites that contain endangered species that are as developed or urban as this, you know? So, I think that's really, you know, unfortunately, the way it goes, you know?
I understand about your testimony about there's a remote likelihood that a bald eagle would nest on this site. But I'm concerned about what you said about the foraging, all right?
Yeah.
Bird's got to eat.
Yeah.
Is there a good probability? I mean, can you put some context into what's the probability of a bird foraging in here, given the proximity of the reservoir?
I don't think a bird could forage in that part of the Manasquan, you know? I mean, you're, you know, it's very narrow. I don't, I didn't see any fish right there. I know they exist. But you have to remember, if you're an eagle and you're foraging, and people probably don't realize how much carrion they eat, which is a dead animal, dead deer on the side of the road, dead rabbit in a field, is, you know, 50% of their diet. The other part of it, they're not, you know, you know ospreys. Ospreys hover above their prey, and then they dive bomb, right? Everybody understand, know that? Like, you know, you have, an osprey will hover above an area, dive down, and get a fish. The eagle also has to be relatively high up from a high perch to see, to see a fish, right? And then it has to have room to come down, so an eagle doesn't pounce. An eagle flies like more, it's more of like a swoop. So, you have to have that maneuverability in that little forest with that corridor. I don't, I don't see it. Now, can one fly over? Absolutely. They fly over, you know, almost everywhere in the state at this point. But that's not, and that's not going to create a threat. The development of this shopping mall is not going to stop it, you know, all of a sudden, eagles aren't going to stop laying eggs. They're going to focus on the reservoir. They're going to hit other areas where there's open water. And like I said, the eagle population's doing really well right now. It's why there's, there's folks with some problems, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, I just have one quick question before Mr. DeBois. You testified that you've visited the site, what, four or five times?
Well, me and people in my office have.
Fine. As a result of your four or five visits to the site, have at any time during any of your visits, you seen any examples either existing or pre-existing of endangered species, including the bald eagle and the mountain lion, anything else you listed?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board? At this time, I'm going to open this to the public. If there's anybody from the public that would like to ask questions, and I'm not taking any testimony, there's questions for the expert that just appeared, please come up, state your name and address, and be sworn in.
We don't have to swear them in for the questioning because they're not testifying.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board?
And remember, this is just for questions of Mr. DeBois and his testimony.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you one more question before I ask questions? At one point, will you open this hearing to comments period of anything anybody has to say regarding testimony, stuff, documents, and anything else? At one point, after you ask questions, will you, at one point, for the end of this hearing application, will you open it to the public for anything they have to say?
Well, as I said, I'm going to open it to the public after each witness.
Well, I think what Mrs. Dixell's asking is, when do they get their chance to testify? And I think the answer to that is, after the applicant's put their entire case in and you've heard everything, then, yeah, right.
Say anything, anything you have to say.
Right. So, it's questions after each witness, and then after they're completely done, you can say whatever you wish.
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, just for the board. What I'm holding is the state GIS maps that I have of this entire site.
This too.
Yeah, well, I'm showing it to you guys. This is state GIS maps. And the first part, the first one of these maps is, this is, this, you agree that this is in the riparian corridor, and the only thing, the site that's buildable is not very big, and there are, this is the state GIS maps. This property is a rank four. It's a rank one and a rank four. And here's the GIS maps. They are, I have it then by number, but I have it eagle, bobcat, bobcat, and eagle, bobcat, and eagle. They are on the property.
Okay. Do you have a question for the expert?
Well, why are you saying they're not? They are.
I said that we, the mapping is what...
Could you speak to the mic, please?
Yeah, sure. The mapping is what, is, let's see, the mapping is the state mapping that allowed, that lets us know that we have to go and individually look at properties and then assess them.
Okay. Okay, so, did you, part of your assessment, did you go off a computer on a Google, or did you sit in your office, go on a Google site, or did you physically have to go out there and walk the property like I did, my husband did?
We did both.
Climb through the woods?
Yeah. We start out with the internet search of the entire, you know, of the property. We do any websites we can pull up, osprey watch, bald eagle, you know, whatever we can find, and then we go on the site and walk the site to confirm or deny what kind of habitats exist on the site.
Well, okay, like I said, I'm sure the state GIS maps are erroneous. This is what's on the property. This is what my husband and I have gone to the county to get. This is what it says, can't make it up. Created by Monmouth County GIS, 9/21/15, and this is New Jersey DEP source landscape data. This is everybody.
Mr. DeBois, I think to follow up on Mrs. Dixell's question, and I think to help educate the board, members of the public, as well as myself, when the state identifies the category for species on the GIS map, does that trigger some kind of process that you have to go through with the DEP?
No.
Is there a permit, or is there anything else that's associated with this, or a review?
The state, you know, like Ms. Dixell was saying, you know, if you just sat in your office and looked at a map, obviously, that's not the best way to do an assessment. But the state creates the landscape project by sitting in their office and painting a broad brush over possible habitat types. So, if a bald eagle's in a forest area at the reservoir, any forest area within a certain proximity to the reservoir gets painted a rank four.
But what I'm saying is, they've designated it as a rank four.
Yeah.
Does that, does that now require you to do anything at the DEP?
No, no. In fact, the, we, you know, we did, we do have a letter of interpretation with a 50-foot buffer, so their biologist agreed that it was an intermediate resource, which means there's no threatened endangered species habitat on site.
Well, that's what I was getting at.
And we got a flood hazard permit, I believe, that has the same classification.
May I just follow up with your question?
Yes.
And to that end, Mr. DeBois, with your experience with the DEP and the development and preparation of these GIS maps, is it your experience that the, they have designated it a class four, showing certain animals or endangered species, because the state or anybody else has gone out on that property and specifically found that endangered species?
No.
Okay. So, that the fact that the map may show that endangered species is in the general area is in no way an indication that the property does now or ever had any endangered species on it? Thank you.
It, it's a planning tool. Howe Township has its own wetland maps that they use. And if you go in for an application and you ask Howe Township, if they, if you have wetlands on your site, they'll pull up these maps. They're not absolutely correct, but they show you if you possibly have a problem. And then someone with a license like mine has to go out and re- do the wetland delineation, or so on and so forth.
And Mrs. Dixell, you have another question?
Yes, no, this, this piece of paper is, is the breakdown from the state. 2011, when bald eagles and were last seen and foraging, um, bobcat, lynx, uh, bald eagles, and this is when they were last observed, physically observed on the property. I've got the, I've been, I've done the breakdown. So, again, this is a rank four and a rank one. The rank one is the water. The habitat-specific, habitat-specific requirements is rank one. And rank four, so is, is this property in its entirety is designated by the state of New Jersey on GIS maps, New Jersey DEP, as a rank four and rank one property, state endangered. It would be an awful shame to have to destroy this, and, and, and dig this property up, and put all these animals and whatever out of existence to go put a shopping center in here. Not only that, gentlemen, this is the riparian corridor. The only buildable thing on this entire thing is this little piece here. That's the only thing built on it.
Is this a question for my, my witness, or is this testimony?
She's, she's getting to a question, right, Mrs. Dixell?
I, I wanna ask them if they think it's worth it, to go dig this whole thing up, to go put a shopping center in here, destroy this, destroy a, a state endangered property, to go put a shopping center in here, and you've already said that this is next to the Manasquan.
That's a question.
But this is our drinking water.
Mrs., Mrs. Dixell, you've asked a question now. Is that a question you're capable of answering, Mr. DeBois? There, there's no, there's no threatening endangered species habitat on this property.
You gotta be kidding. Also, so in other words, you're telling, you're telling the G I- are you telling the GIS maps, the state of New Jersey, the New Jersey DEP, that they've got rocks in their head?
Mrs. Dixell, the testimony is that there is no endangered species. If you have a question about his testimony...
I have a question.
I'd be glad to, to hear it, but...
Well, I have a question about his testimony, sir, 'cause I, it is my opinion, and I'm asking him, I don't, is your testimony correct, according to the GIS map?
Well, he obviously thinks his testimony is correct.
He testified as to that.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the state of New Jersey DEP, New Jersey DEP, and, and they sit here and make these maps. They don't sit here and make Halloween books.
Mrs. Dixell, you're allowed to disagree with him, but, I mean, he's given an answer to the question. And when you, when it's time to testify, you know, you can go into why you, you know, believe that he's incorrect.
Let me ask you one more question. With regard to the Manasquan River, that is our drinking water, do you agree that digging up this whole thing and putting all these endangered species out of, out, out of existence is gonna damage our drinking water? It, it, it's very clear that this shopping center is right up against the edge of this, at, at Manasquan River. This is our drinking water, can you understand that? We live here, we have to live here, we have to drink this water.
Well, you, you've asked a question, Mrs. Dixell, so, Mr. DeBois, is that a question that you're capable of answering? I'm not a hydrologist. I don't know if digging up this site is gonna impact the groundwater. There's no threatening endangered species habitat on the property. That's...
Can you answer one more question?
Sure.
By digging up the, the trees and taking the trees down, will you agree, or will you understand that by taking trees down and regrading the land, you're gonna, probably could be, have severe flooding that will damage the reservoir, or maybe that will go, that, that your flooding will go into the reservoir?
Mrs. Dixell.
Mrs. Dixell. This is not my, my, my witnesses'.
Thank you, sir, I'm gonna sit down, that's fine, and when it comes time, I'll do the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Count, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. DeBois, has this report been submitted to the NJDEP?
No. Like, they, they would look at it in the context of their LOI and their flood hazard permit approval, and both the LOI and the flood hazard permit approval came back with an intermediate classification, which means that there's no, there were no threatening endangered species issues from the state.
If they felt that there were threatening endangered species on the property, would they have designated the wetlands and the riparian differently?
They would have designated them as exceptional resource with a 150-foot buffer. They got designated as an intermediate resource with a 50-foot buffer.
And you have those permits?
Yes.
The applicant has the permits in hand, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to ask a question of this witness?
Yes.
Please, come up, state your name and address.
Yes, Reeve Appgar, trustee with the Villages. Where's the nearest body of water?
I'm sorry, sir, sir, can you, uh, just give me your name again?
Reeve, R-E-E-V-E, Appgar. I'm a trustee with the Villages Environmental. Where's the nearest body of water to this site?
The Manasquan River.
No, you're not right. The nearest body of water is a lake within 500 feet.
Okay.
It's got a circumference of al- almost a mile. That's plenty of a place for a bald eagle to see a fish.
Well, sir, this is questions, so...
Pardon me?
You have to ask questions.
Well, I asked a question, and now I'm answering part of, of his, his statement was that the Manasquan River is the primary area that a bald eagle would swim in, or fishing. But... There is a lake with carp and catfish within 500 feet of this property.
I don't, I don't think, um, what's your name?
Reeve.
Reeve. I don't think you understood my testimony before I mentioned that the, uh, that the reservoir was the main, uh, habitat for a bald eagle.
Yeah.
Right? So from there, when you have a bald eagle nest, that area is considered critical. So around the reservoir is critical, but the buffer from a nest is only 660 feet.
Yes.
The, this site is greater than 660 feet from, from the reservoir, and in the Manasquan River, where there's foraging habitat, there's an open canopy, meaning that that bird that has to swoop down and get its meals has room to maneuver through that area. In this, on this site, you can make faces all you want.
I'm not making...
Mr. DeBois, Mr. DeBois, answer the question, don't, don't provide opinions about facial expressions. I'm just saying that, I've said it before, that this corridor is, is not wide enough for bald eagles to come down and use as a, as a foraging habitat. Well, I think though, Mr. DeBois, in, in fair, the first question was, what is the nearest body of water? Is there a reason? The Manasquan River is the body of water. Are you familiar with, with the lake? The reservoir?
No, the lake.
The lake. Oh, the lake? Uh, I believe so.
It must be on your map. Pretty big lake.
Well, let's, let's just allow Mr. DeBois to look at his documents.
So about one, uh...
Let, let's allow Mr. DeBois to look through his, his documents.
Right there.
Okay. The lake in the middle of your development?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a natural lake.
Right? With carp, catfish? Okay.
Snapping turtles?
Okay, that's, it's hot. So, so with that lake being where it is, you now understand where it is? Is there significance to that lake for what you reviewed? If that lake was considered foraging, which meant that it had trees of sufficient size, I mean, I didn't, I didn't go there, but if it had trees of a sufficient size, and was able to, um, have purchase for the bald eagles, it would be considered habitat. But that's not the Manasquan River where this site is. So, I think just, you know, what you're saying is, that the, that lake would not have been something you would have been required to review in your, in your report? Even if we would review it, that lake would get 150-foot buffer. Even if we were to say, right now, that it's possible that a bald eagle were to forage there, and I'm not disputing that, I haven't seen it, but it would get 150-foot buffer. And your site is greater than 150 feet from there?
This is your site, this is, this is your site border.
Yes.
This is the lake.
Right.
You've got a road, you've got a set of houses, it's easily within 200 feet of your border.
Right. And then it's, and then there's wetlands on this side, and where they're developing is on the other.
Well, what, what is this? This is the site, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Is this, is, is this the entire site? How big, how big is actually the, this lake here is, is easily 150 feet away, uh, uh, from, from this, from this red line you have here on your, on your map.
Again, I didn't look at the lake, but the area that's on this property is not habitat per-.
No, there's no lake on the property.
Well, let's, let's allow Mr. DeBois to answer. The, the portion of the wetlands that are on this property are not, is not, would not be considered foraging habitat for bald eagles. And the DEP agreed to that. Well, certainly at this point, the board makes no, you know, finding one way or the other, but do you have any more questions?
No, that's the only question I have on this, for this one.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would like to ask any questions? If there is, please come up, give your name.
Alan Goldberg, 69A.
Speak into the microphone, please. Give your name and address.
Alan Goldberg, 69A, William and Mary Square, Freehold, in the Villages. Mr. DeBois? Can you tell us, um, what percentage of your study was done with, I guess, the Google Maps that you referenced and actually onsite?
When we do these, I mean, we, when we do these studies, we spend roughly, um, the, the, the four to six days, uh, so there's times where we're out there for four to six hours, sometimes eight hours, the first time we were out there, I believe, was all day. But the, um, in-office work is probably two days' worth of work, so I would say the, the in-office work, the desktop work is probably three to four days, and the, the field work is three to four days, it's roughly 50%.
And your purpose...
Please speak into the mic and...
And your responsibility and purpose is just to determine whether there's any endangered species in the questionable area.
Right.
So it has nothing to do with other, uh, animals, deer, or anything else that's separate? Are you confident with what you have, that if construction were to occur, that there would be no endangered species that would appear as a result of any kind of construction that began?
Yeah.
You stake your license and reputation on that?
Absolutely, on this site, that's surrounded by development, absolutely.
So we would not see, in your opinion, any kind of endangered species migrating over into the Villages if construction started?
There, there are no endangered species that I know of that live in and amongst homes.
Does that also mean in the area that we're talking about?
Well, I mean that there's, no, you're right, there's no, uh, there would be no endangered species migrating into the Villages as a result of this.
So then, based on your reputation, that would not happen?
I don't believe so, no.
Well, can you say absolutely it won't?
I could say absolut- yeah, sure, absolutely it won't.
Guess that's on the record?
Sure.
Then I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
At this time, anyway. Thank you.
Is there anybody else, please, come up?
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly. Question?
Question, sir. Thank you.
Sir, are you aware that the, that there is a massive deer herd in those woods? That do now migrate onto the Villages' property? They do all the time. We've got them in the Villages all the time, especially in the evening. So if you decimate the property, are you saying that there will be no wildlife, um, coming into the Villages? Can you absolutely, like he said, Mr. Goldberg said, stake your reputation and your license on the fact that the deer herd, massive deer herd that's there now, will not come roaming through the Villages worse at night?
Mr. Goldberg, I have to get close to the mic.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Goldberg stated about threatening endangered species.
Okay.
The deer and the rabbits and the groundhogs, I cannot say will not come into the Villages.
So you don't consider them ex- so you consider them expendable, correct? You consider them expendable, they're not endangered, you consider them? Sure, what the hell, get rid of them.
I think he's answered the question. I think he's answered it.
Okay. So, oh, so, so in other words, okay, so we'll call, you can expect a phone call from us if we get 200 deer in the Villages at night. We can destroy them.
Is there anybody else? Please come up, give your name.
Paul Novick, 99A, Eve Shamroad, in the Villages. Uh, Mr. DeBois, uh, you've stated that you have not been at the lake personally, all right? So if you have not been at the lake personally, how can you make a determination that bald eagles would not forage there?
I di- I didn't say, uh, I haven't been at the lake personally. If there were bald eagles at your lake, and the DEP thought that that was habitat, uh, they would give that a 150-foot buffer. That's what I said.
Has anyone from your organization been at the lake personally?
No. No, we, we didn't go off our property.
Okay. So if no one in your organization has seen that lake personally, I understand what you said about the 150-foot buffer, how could you make recommendations regarding that lake?
I, I don't believe I made any recommendations regarding that lake. I said if the DEP counted that as foraging habitat, the worst-case scenario for that would be 150-foot buffer around the lake.
Okay, thank you. I just want to point out that if, if your company has not gone there in person, uh, I don't understand how you, how you could make a determination that there's no danger to the bald eagle, that's, with what's, with what's coming. Could you please evaluate on that, please?
We looked at the habitat on our site and decided, it was our opinion, that there was no habitat on our particular site for foraging bald eagles. And that was backed up by the state of New Jersey on two separate other approvals.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, I'm closing the public portion. Counselor, you have another witness?
No. No, Mr. Chairman, that is the last witness for tonight, so, uh, I guess we need to, um, look at, with the next time we can...
Yeah. How was that first meeting in August, Ellen?
Right now, there's the open space element, M1 application that was carried to.
Which one?
How do you look?
Brian Hegerly.
Okay. We can do this, um, we can do you in the first, uh, meeting in August, which is the third?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Fine. That, that's, that's fine, and we'll have our plans in before that, so...
We do need an extension of time.
I'll, I'll send you, I'll do an extension to...
Okay. So then, let me just...
September?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the application of SL Homes Incorporated, case number SP-1013, be carried to the board's August 3rd, 7, 2017, uh, meeting, 7 o'clock here in Town Hall. Let me know further notice to property owners, so if you receive notice, uh, back in 2015, or whenever it is that the notice was first sent out, you'll, you will not receive another notice in the mail. Um, this is your notice to come back on August 3rd, 2017. If anybody would like to review the file and any documents, you're certainly more than welcome to visit Eileen in the Planning Office.
Eileen in the planning office during normal business hours. And at some point, um, the applicant will be submitting that, uh, is it the turning radius, Mr. Waters?
Yeah, it is. The turning radius and the traffic pattern, that'll be submitted within the next week.
Okay, so if anyone is interested in taking a look at that, you can call Eileen to see if it's in yet, and you can come down and take a look at the planning office.
Thank you very much.
The board will now take a 15-minute break. Thank you. The next order of business, case number SP-1028, AutoZone Northeast, final major site plan, application to AutoZone Northeast LLC as applicant, and lean Milts Petroleum Incorporated as owner, seeking preliminary and final major site plan, woodlands management plan to approve constructor one-story approximately 7,380-foot square, commercial building for retail sales of automotive parts and accessories, as well as a loading area and refuse closure on premises known as Block 35 dot 82, Lot 41 dot 014545, US Route 9 North, right next to here.
That's right, Mr. Chairman, right next to here. Uh, my name's Frank Rivalini, I'm here tonight with Mr. Thomas Pugsley, who's the engineer on the, on the project. And if you recall, the last time we were here, which was a couple of months ago, uh, we were asked to take a look architecturally at the side of the building that's facing the Borough Hall, and, uh, you know, to see if we could make some changes there and have the signage on the building, on the two remaining sides of the building, and try to approach it from that fashion. So we went back to AutoZone, and they've made some changes here. So rather than have me explain it, and then we made some other submissions that were required based on the last hearing, and, uh, we're asking for final approval tonight. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Pugsley, he's already sworn in.
He was sworn in for the preliminary. I'll swear again, though.
Okay.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you're a professional engineer, uh, not planner, right, just engineer?
Engineer, correct.
Okay.
Say your name.
Thomas Pugsley.
Okay. Do you want me to requalify him, or...
You still have your license from the last time?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I think he's good.
All right, Mr. Pugsley, could you explain, uh, the changes that you made to the plans since the preliminary?
Okay, so I guess for starters, since we were talking about the building...
So this is, this is a new exhibit?
Yeah, this is actually the, uh, plan that was submitted, has, uh, I don't know what the exhibit number is.
Looks like it's 822, I believe, architectural elevations prepared by AutoZone.
Does it have a date of 4/19?
Yes.
Yeah, so thi- this was part of what was submitted. What's the exhibit number?
822.
All right, so Eileen has pre-marked some exhibits.
I think what he's talking about is 822.
822, from what I can see.
Okay, is this, uh, it's exactly the same?
Yes.
I can't see from here, is it colored?
Yes, yes, it's colored.
But 22 was color also? Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, so, at the, at the last meeting, one of the big discussion points that we had was the, the backside of the building. Um, originally, the AutoZone had the AutoZone's colors that would wrap around the backside of the building, and the request was to, uh, try to make the building kind of blend in a little bit better with the landscaping that will be provided along the common property line with our site and the municipal building.
Could you just point to the elevation that faces the municipal building?
The, this would be the right wall with the south elevation, the second one down from the top. And, uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, we'd indicated that we would continue to carry the AutoZone stripes around the front of the building and stop at the first column, and then the rest of the building going, uh, along the, uh, south elevation, as well as the rear elevation, which would be the east elevation, that's the third elevation down. The colors on that were changed to, uh, a gray, and the top is more of a white, uh, uh, light white color, uh, in order to better blend in. So we took all the AutoZone colors and striping off the back, uh, in order to, to fit in.
What's the dimension of that facade? Like, how long is it?
The...
I know.
So I guess referring to this, this is not an exhibit that is previously marked, this is the, uh...
This will be, uh, 824.
824.
What is it?
Okay, this is the colored version of the site plan revision 2 dated 6/117, uh, and it's an exhibit, and the date on, for the exhibit is 6/817. Uh, this basically is a colored version of the site plan, which is sheet three of the plans that were submitted with the landscaping turned on. The, uh, so for the dimensions of the building, in the, along the southern facade is about 115 feet in length, and the east facade is 64 feet in length.
So you're aware of our requirement regarding blank walls, correct? That we have a requirement in our ordinance that deals with length, the facade of buildings that are greater than 75 feet in length?
Correct, and that's why they, they had gone in and added these columns along the, the back of the building in order to try to comply with that requirement.
Well, the requirement requires projections, so like, three feet bump outs, so that there's not a blank wall.
Right.
I mean, I, I get that, I mean, we're, we don't have the benefit of your colored drawing, 'cause that was not what we were provided with, and I can't see that far, but from what I'm looking at, it looks like a blank wall. And that's not what our ordinance requires. It requires bump outs, it requires material changes, it requires something that doesn't look monotonous.
Okay, so...
We thought that the, uh, when we were here the last time, we kind of had the feeling that that part of the wall was best to try to hide it as much as we possibly could, so that really we just couldn't even be seen from. So we took off all of our architectural striping and all that stuff, and we came up with...
If I could, having been at that hearing, the board didn't like the colors of the striping and didn't want to see the differences, and they asked you to look at the facade and whether or not the orange stripe in particular needed to be carried all the right, all the way around the building, specifically because the backside of this building will be what's viewed from Town Hall. So as people are coming in and coming out, this building was visible.
Right.
So that's as I recall, so...
That's what I said, so...
I, I agree, but the, the issue is, is that this, the requirement requires that there's bump outs in the building, so you don't have one blank side facade. And I understand you say you have columns, they're extremely narrow, and based on the drawing that we have, it, it, I can't tell what the deal is with, with the coloring, but there needs to be material breaks vertically, wider than these tiny little columns, and bump outs, three feet projections is what's required. So did you, were you aware of that requirement?
Yeah, we were requesting a waiver for that, for that requirement. These, the, these columns are...
Well, let's go, let's go on to that as to, you know, why the waiver is appropriate in your, in your view.
Well, the, on, on the back of the building, um, well, actually, th- these are on the front and the back. I mean, they, they stick off only three inches, so, um...
You said three inches they stick out?
They, they stick out three inches. And on, the, the reason for that is they were just kept the same wrapping around the building. On the north facade of the building, as we talked about last time, we had the, the sidewalk going along the front. We need to be able to maintain the, uh, people being able to walk there. If you put a three-foot extension out into the sidewalk, you're basically cutting off, off the sidewalk. So that's why we had requested the relief there. And then as far as why it's that way on the back, it was just carried, carried, this similar, uh, pattern was carried around the...
Well, what if you hold the sidewalk, and the projection was in instead of out? Right? So if you hold the line of the sidewalk, and the three feet goes interior to the building, not towards the parking lot, then that wouldn't impact the sidewalk at all, right?
Uh, that, that is correct, uh, from an operations perspective. That's something that we'd have to get clarification from.
I, I would just, I mean, I would defer to the board, but this is not something that this board has waived easily. And we have made applicants in the past, for existing buildings, come back with modifications. So this is a new building, so I, I think that care should be given to how it looks. And I agree, considering it's immediately next to Town Hall, it's going to be very visible, and blank facades without any kind of projection or movement, in my opinion, in and out, is contrary to what the, the intent of the ordinance provision is.
The side that's facing the Town Hall, how visible is that going to be to anybody?
Where's that?
The, the rear, uh, the south facade and the east facade will be, uh, have a hea- a pretty heavy buffer of vegetation along that side, as well as the existing vegetation on the, um, driveway to the municipal building. So it's, it's going to, you'll be able to see it, but it's going to be well-covered by the landscaping.
Um, Mr. Pugsley, we spent the last meeting grilling another applicant over this very issue, and what the resolution was, if you can put your colored rendering of your elevations up, what the applicant agreed upon is where you have your white up on top, they actually took and projected that out from the building to overhang. And I don't know what the height is above the, the grade line of that, but certainly I can understand your concern about the sidewalk, but if you make that bump out high enough, that acts almost as a, a small overhang.
Mm-hmm.
Person can walk under it, and it meets, what I believe, and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, the intent of what this board is looking for.
Okay.
I, I would agree. I mean, we have been pretty consistent in the application of this provision, and if the applicant can't adhere 100%, we look to something to at least get us closer to what the requirement is intending to accomplish.
Probably a good suggestion, but he's an engineer. These are architetchals drawn by AutoZone. Uh, I'm not saying it's something we couldn't do, I just don't really know as I stand here today. Um, we could take a look at it, and, um, assuming we can do it, we'll do it.
I, I would just express my opinion to you, so you understand that I would not be inclined to grant you the waiver as this is presented up right now. You know...
I just, I just, not in a position, architecturally, I don't know if it's, I'm assuming it's doable, it doesn't sound that ugly to me, but...
You know, in 2006 and 2007, I was also chairman of this board, and we had a manager, Mr. Zarneki, a township manager, who was also a planner, and we worked for two years to create design standards for Howell Township, to make Howell Township look like something. Before, today, everything was disgusting. You went to any other town to Freehold, you saw shopping centers, you saw buildings that had taste to it, and, and ours weren't. So we created design standards, and we want these design standards to, uh, to be, to be done.
Okay, so, if we can comply, we'll comply. So as, as far as, I guess we're concerned for tonight, we'll just assume...
I mean, if you look at this, the Walmart, the original plan for that Walmart didn't look like...
Across the street.
The Walmart that you see today.
Yeah, I know.
That's a beautiful...
I know, looks very nice.
...oppression. That's all.
Okay. So we'll make that change. If there's a problem with it...
Well, let me just, just ask, Jen, the, would that change, make it compliant?
No, I, they still would need the relief, because the, the relief requires, you know, three-foot bump outs, um, across, you know, at periodic intervals, but I think that it is, it is coming closer to compliance. Um, a- and we have, you know, the board has looked favorably on that in the past, so long as there's an attempt to get closer to compliance. Um, but as I have seen in, in the past, at least recently, it's something that the board wants to see before acting. So I, I would defer to the board on that.
Jen, would, would bumping inward, like you said before, would that put them in compliance with the ordinance?
Yeah.
Is there...
It has to be across 10% of the facade, so it has to be like a three-feet, a three-foot...
But if, if it was possible, would that be something that you, you would do?
Again, it comes down to the operations, 'cause then you're taking away the space on the inside, and then it gets back to the architectural. So they're very, they have everything laid out strategically, so that things are in certain spots, and then having little, um, areas that come in will get in the way of where the storage, that the supplies are, so I'm not saying it's not possible.
But assuming it doesn't affect that, assuming it's something that architecturally you would be in favor for if, if it's possible?
Right, right, if it was possible, I don't think there'd be any, uh, any reason why we couldn't do it. It's just from an operational perspective, it may end up interfering with the way that they have the whole interior laid out. So that's not something that I can really speak to.
Is it anything they've ever done before, to your knowledge, like that?
Not to my knowledge, no.
That, that's, that's why I suggested coming out.
Yeah.
Right, leaves the, the box on the inside uninterrupted.
I just like keeping the sidewalk, 'cause pulling, pushing it out would affect the sidewalk, wouldn't it?
Um, no, that, that, and that's why I specifically said bump out wouldn't be the whole, the whole height, it would just be...
Oh, you, oh, you mean the top bump out, the top, okay.
A, a band on the top, yes. At least it gives it some interruption and allows it to maintain the sidewalk.
But that's still, they would still need a variance, right? They would still need...
Yes, and I, I mean, what we have seen in the past, in, in, I guess, at the, at the last meeting, it was a similar type, I mean, it wasn't an auto parts store, but it was a store, and the issues were the shelving, et cetera, and they took great, you know, they went through the process of creating different material choices vertically along the facade, you know, with significant changes in color, significant changes in materials, to give a, a visual break along the, the building that wouldn't impair the inter-, like the interior space.
And if I could, what is the width of the sidewalk in front of your building?
Is eight feet.
Eight feet. So typical, is, is there a reason why it's eight feet wide?
Right, we have it, yeah, we have it at eight feet, and, and also, one of the things that we were going to get to, uh, next, was that we put the bollards in at the...
That's not why I'm asking the question. Is there a reason why it's eight feet?
I know, I know, but I, I want to explain as to the, the fact that it was eight feet originally, that we went in and put the bollards in. As a result of putting the bollards in, now the sidewalk, the, the usable space is going to be more along the lines of six feet. And they like to have a six-foot sidewalk, so that, that people can walk next to each other, carrying their product, and not run into each other. So they like to have the six, the, uh, at least that six-foot walking area. Originally, it's eight feet, so that you could have an overhang, a car could come up to it and stick beyond that, and then you'd still be able to have that six-foot walking area. But in this particular case, per the board's request, we'd put the, the bollards in.
But just so the board's aware, typically, we don't see eight-foot wa-, eight-foot wide sidewalks along buildings. So when the comment is that in order to do a three-foot bump out on that facade, it would take up the sidewalk, I would disagree.
Does AutoZone have carts, shopping carts?
Carts, no.
No, so it's just for walking?
Correct.
But what's, what's diameter of the bollard?
Six-inch diameter.
Is eight, is eight feet a standard sidewalk in every AutoZone?
Um, that's what they, I'm just trying to think of the ones that I've done, and we have eight feet there, of the ones that I've done. That's, that's what they request, that's where we start with, and I, just trying to think of the ones that I've worked on, I think we've maintained the eight feet.
But the clearance is about six feet, you're saying?
Right, that, that's the goal, so that you can, can walk through there. Now, if you put the three-foot bump out on there, you would have, uh, so you have an eight feet, the three-foot bump out would leave you five feet. And then if you had the car pull up, it would overhang, then you'd be in there between two and a half to three feet, depending on how far the car overhangs.
How, how, how wide is the column?
Car's not going to overhang because the bollard's going to...
Well, right, so then, but if you have the bollard in there, then the bollard's going to be set back from the face of the curb about six inches or so, and then you're going to have the six-inch bollard. So then, again, it's starting to, it's starting to narrow it down in there.
But you're talking how many columns?
One, two, depending on how far somebody...
One, two, depending on how far somebody walks all the way in the back or the side. You're talking the distance of where the narrowing of this sidewalk is going to be, it's very minimal.
Right. So there'd be, I'm not sure if the spacing that we have shown here is, but what was the spacing that you would require for the columns?
There has to be a break every, within every 50 feet.
Every 50 feet. So the length of the building there is 100 and...
No, it has to be over 10% of the facade, for any facade that's big, that's beyond 50 feet. So, you know, there's no spacing, but I, I mean, I, I agree with Laura. I think there's more than enough room in the front of that building. I mean, you know, there's other relief you need for the front of that building, quite honestly. So I, I'm, I'm reluctant to, to look favorably on an eight-foot wide sidewalk so that the six parking spaces that are up against the building that will actually use that sidewalk can walk side by side when the entrance of the building's at the corner and the balance of the people in the parking lot are not going to use the sidewalk, when you don't have foundation plantings and you don't have the bump outs on the building. So I, I would urge you to take another look at the front of that building. And to, to look carefully at ways to minimize the impact of a solid blank facade. Because our ordinance also requires foundation plantings, which you don't have either.
Correct. And we, we had requested a waiver for that at the, and we discussed that at the last meeting, correct?
As I recall, you weren't granted any relief at the prior...
No.
One, one was the lottery.
Correct. We just had the discussion at the meeting, at the last meeting, correct?
So, I mean, I would submit that eight-foot wide for 10 parking spaces along the front of a retail building is excessive. We don't even put 10-foot wide sidewalks on Route 9, we put four-foot wide sidewalks on Route 9. So I think that there's room in the front of this building to make adjustments that would bring this building more into compliance with our ordinance with respect to the facade treatment and the landscape plantings, which I think is something that this board has consistently required.
Okay.
Do you want to explain the, any other changes you made?
Sure. So then referring back to A24, we had indicated that we had provided the bollards based on the last meeting. It was pretty clear that the bollards were required as part of the plan. So we have spoken to AutoZone and they agreed to have the bollards put along all the spaces where, the area where the parking is head-on into the building. We also have added shade trees along the front of the property, which are not showing up on this, on this rendering. They got mistakenly left off when we brought, brought the landscaping onto this rendering. But we do have the three street, street trees provided. We also swapped out the white pines along the southern property line to put in the Colorado spruce, as recommended in the comment letters. We added sidewalk along Route 9. We also have incorporated the fire striping, the signage and the fire striping around the parking lot, based on the discussions with the fire department. And, um, let's see, and, and then, those are really the, the significant changes to the, to the plans. And then we also had submitted some of the other documents that we were talking about at the last meeting, the geotechnical information that we have, as well as the RAO that we had and the cut sheet...
The specs on the oil tank?
On the oil tank, for the recycling oil tank. So all that was submitted as part of the revised plan, revised submission.
And you submitted an alternate lighting plan also?
Oh, yes. Yes. And then we also, at the last meeting, we were talking about the, the lighting. The lighting design that we had did not comply with the requirement of a .5 foot candle average. So we, we went through and we looked at, at that to see how could we comply with that. And we had submitted to the board, I'm not sure what the exhibit number is for that...
Exhibit number is A21.
So we had submitted A21 to, to try to comply with the .5 average foot candle across the entire site. So as we were, were going through, we looked at many different scenarios. We, we used the, the light fixture at the low, it's an LED light fixture. We used the lowest number of LEDs that the fixture comes with. And we put them on, a couple of them on the property. And in doing that, we were able to get an average of .6 foot, foot candles. The problem with that is, in order to try to achieve that, a large part of the parking lot has zero foot candle levels in it. So from that perspective, that's an unsafe condition. In order to achieve a .5 foot candle value, you have, you have to have some of those lower numbers in there in order to balance out the numbers that are right below the light fixtures. So unless you're going to put the light fixtures really, really high, and you don't have those high points below, you're going to end up with not being able to meet that requirement. So based on the alternate lighting plan, we, we provided this as a demonstration that we can't comply with that requirement. And we would request a, a waiver for that. The, we're currently proposing a average foot candle reading of 2.1 foot candles, which is a very reasonable foot candle reading through, through the improvement area. So from a legal liability perspective, I wouldn't be able to sign off on any kind of lighting plan that had zeros within the actual area where the customers and the employees would be walking at, in the evening hours.
So just to be clear, what we're saying is, we want to go with the original lighting plan, not with A22.
That's correct.
That's what we're proposing.
That's correct.
What's the uniformity ratio that you're using with the two point? I'm assuming the 2.1 is average maintained?
Correct. That's the average throughout the pavement and the sidewalk areas.
And what's the uniformity ratio?
All right. So this is the, the site plan set that was submitted to you. So looking at, is there, is this an exhibit number as well?
Yes, it is. A23, I believe.
This is the last revised plan, yes.
So this is the site plan set, I guess Exhibit A23, Revision 3 dated 6/1/17, so going to Sheet 6 of the set, just the lighting plan. So the, the average, so the, the maximum is 4.5 foot candles, the minimum is .5. So we're maintaining the .5 throughout the parking and sidewalk area, and the average to max is .5 to 1.
.5 to 1 is 2 to 1, right?
So the, the average...
The uniformity is the max over the min.
Yeah, so... Got to get my calculator. So the maximum to min, the maximum divided by the min is 9.
And is that consistent with IES standards?
Not a, to be honest with you, I'm not exactly familiar with that ratio. The, the average is consistent with the IES standards. I don't have that information in front of me, and I'm not 100% sure of that number.
Guys, professionals, can I ask you, similar to what, the discussion we had the last meeting, 2.1 average maintained, I get the drift that that's acceptable to you guys?
Yeah. IES standards for a parking lot would require a .5 minimum. So as he had mentioned, you know, if you did a .6 average through the site, then you get zeros in your lot, and that's not safe. So it does require at least a .5 minimum.
Right. So we're, we're okay with the average maintained of 2.1. What about the uniformity ratio of 9? I, I just offhand, I don't remember.
I can't say I know. It's, truthfully, it's not something I, I know and I don't look for. I, we usually just look at the average and the minimum. So I, I don't know what the IES standard is on that.
And these are all downward throw fixes?
Correct.
Doc Scott compliant?
Correct. Yeah. Everything is flat lens facing down, no tilt.
So the, the other concern is that the lighting obviously has to be on during nighttime for a certain, at least a certain portion of the evening. The concern is that we don't want to have this very bright lighting 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning.
I think we have automatic timers that shut the lights off.
Yeah. Typically, the lights would go off about an hour after the facility closes down, to give time for the employees to leave, and then the lights would shut off.
That's fine. Can we put on the record then, as part of our resolution, a time period that the lights would go down, would, would turn off?
Sure.
Or at least go to a low illumination level?
Sure. Yeah, we can add a note on the plans to say that the lights will go off an hour after closing.
Okay. Can we?
Yes.
I, I understand that. What, what is the typical hours of closing?
Oh, okay. We went over that last time.
Yeah. That was, yeah, I think, it's about nine, 9 o'clock on, 8:00 PM on Sundays and 10:00 PM on Monday through Saturday.
So could we stipulate 11 o'clock at night, seven days a week, that will go, will be shut down?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Can somebody note that for Ron?
Except maybe, there might be some emergency lighting that, that's left on the site. Is there any emergency lighting that's left on, inside the place or any place?
Yeah. We may have a security light that would be on by the delivery door.
We, we would anticipate that there would be at least some low-level amount of light.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
So the passing police car could see if somebody's in there.
Correct.
Correct.
The majority of the lights would shut down.
Yeah.
Correct.
I just don't want to take, I want to take that brightness down.
Sure.
And then in terms of signage, Tom, what signage are we looking for? Just to be clear, I think we discussed this the last time.
Yep. Actually, go back to...
This hasn't changed since the last time, right?
Right. So going back to A22, we have just the two wall signs, the one that would be on the west facade. And then we also talked about at, at the last meeting, that we would add another sign, wall sign on the north elevation, so that when people are in the parking lot and they look at the building, they know what they're looking at.
And the pylon sign.
And the pylon sign, right. And that, and that remains unchanged, it's fully compliant.
Okay. And you also submitted a stormwater management report?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we, we addressed some of the other, other items that were in your professionals' comment letters. So we have addressed those. I didn't go through each, each one of those, but we have, we have addressed them. And we did see a, a new letter, and appears that most of our comments had been successfully addressed.
In terms of the, I'm addressing the board now, in terms of the back of the building, the one, the part that faces the, this building, except for the jut-out issue, which we discussed, is the general direction we're going here, the kind of thing that you think would be something that, or do you have any comments, any more comments on that? Might be a better way to ask it. We basically took it, we've, we've taken out the striping, we put it gray there, we put the white, we're trying to blend it in. So it's basically as invisible as, as we can make it with the buffer between here and the, the building. Because at the last meeting, this is what we understood you were trying to tell us. And I just, since it looks like we're going back for an architectural revision anyway, I would just want to, I was trying to see if I could report back to them that at least the direction we're going here is, you know, along the right way.
Can you tell me again what side's going to be facing Town Hall?
Show them the side.
It's the south elevation, which is the second one down. This is the one that's parallel to your entrance drive coming in.
That's the concern, you know? We discussed it last time.
Yeah, sure.
That was, that was the real cause of...
We talked about the wraparound and then stopping the wraparound and just basically going bland the rest of the way, which is what we're trying to do.
I think that's the issue that we're, or at least that I'm having, is that, I like your word, bland. It does look very bland. I personally would like to see some interruption.
No, I understand that. I said aside from that.
And then also possibly some mitigation of the colors. So I'm not saying you have to make it very lively or something like that, but let's not go the opposite direction, swing the pendulum to make it all very, very bland.
Are you saying earth tones, like? I'm saying something. Like we requested a Walmart?
Now, we're talking beyond the wraparound there?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes.
So what you're saying is, the colors we have shown here, which I think is gray and white, is that what we're showing?
Correct.
You might want a different color there?
What if it's gradients? What if it was gradients of white and lighter, although it's a darker gray?
What could do that?
Would that be?
Yeah. Just something that's so stark.
Right.
The way you don't, what you're suggesting, Mr. Nash, is the white and the gray is too stark together.
I, I think we're looking, leading to an earth-toned color to blend.
Okay.
Or with some transitions or something to...
All right. We'll take a look at that then. Uh, Mr. Pugsley, do you have anything else you want to add at this point?
No, that was, that was it.
Okay. With that being said then, I think what the board's direction to us is to go back and take a look at this, because you're going to want to see it. If I just agree to it here...
I, I think that's correct. However, before you go, because I think we should discuss it, any of the other areas where you need relief, let's just hit that to make sure, you know, to see, to see where we are on that.
Sure.
So I think we could use the CME report as a, as a guide for that. And let's see, I think, beginning on page 3.
Is the June 8th report?
I was looking at a different one, but I think that the relief is still the same. So you were granted the one variance already for lots size, you don't have to deal with that. It's the, the remaining relief that they've, that they've indicated.
I think he's already addressed item B on page 3 about the lighting.
Yeah, we talked about the lighting. Can we start with item C?
You see it, Tom?
Okay. So item C is the area between the parking and the building, shall be landscaped. So, right, so as we had talked at the, at the last meeting, going back to... A24. The, we, we were requesting relief for, from having the plantings along the front of the building, as we discussed, the width of the sidewalk. We wanted to maintain enough room for, for customers to safely be walking along the sidewalks. And, and having both bollards and the landscaping was just narrowing everything down. So we had, at the last meeting, I, I had thought that we had talked and were going down the line of, if we had the bollards, that we wouldn't necessarily need to have the landscaping.
Sherry, what's your thoughts?
If I could, just interject quickly, just because I've been trying... If I could just interject quickly, just because I've been trying to pinpoint it, I don't see the bollards on the plan. So, can you just confirm what sheet it is? Because I ha, I don't see it.
Oh, Shari's not in?
Shari's here, I just want to, we keep referring to the bollards that are shown on the plans and I just want to make sure, one, if it was just an omission, that they get placed on there, but if it's just something...
Should be on the site plan sheet.
Yeah, it looks like the first...
Rev 3? You have rev 3?
I do, and if you look up there, I don't see the bollards. I mean, I have it on display. Yeah, I don't see them either.
Yeah, so I have, well, not that this is going to solve your, I don't know what, what happened, but on the plans I have are the bollards going along the entire front of the property.
Okay, all right, so you'll just make sure that those get placed on. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, with respect, and I don't mean to step on your toes, Shari, but in the past, in buildings of this nature, give, you know, I, I understand that there's , there's difficulties in putting landscaping up against the building, but we have required applicants to put planters up against the building with some kind of vegetation in there. And again, given an eight foot sidewalk, I think there's ample room to put planters and not impede circulation. So, I, I, they still would need the relief, but that's at least an attempt to come closer to compliance.
I think you go in between those three foot projections.
Exactly.
That would be acceptable if it's acceptable to you guys, planters.
Okay.
So, if you have an eight foot sidewalk with three foot coming out, then you're down to five feet, and then you have the curb and the bollard. So, the sidewalk's coming down to around between three and three and a half.
You misinterpreted what they said. They said in between the bump outs. So, in the recessed area, you're still going to have eight feet and there's ample room, like we said, a sidewalk is typically four to six feet, so there's ample room for some planters. And this is something that we've consistently required on development along Route 9 of this nature, without requiring them strict compliance of providing landscaping between the building and the parking area.
Correct, and I was assuming that the planters are going to be about three feet. So, that would essentially eliminate that area between the columns, so you'd have a sidewalk that's about three to three and a half feet.
I, I don't see it that way. I see it as you have eight feet, you're bumping out three feet, that would be five feet left, and if the planters are in between the three foot bump outs, you still have a five foot wide sidewalk.
Except we have the bollards. So, the elimination of the bollards.
The ball, yeah, and, and we also didn't say that planters had to be three feet, but I, I think that that's something that we should, the, the board should look at requiring.
We're going back anyway, we'll take a look at it. We'll try to do it.
Jen, can I just ask you a question on that? It's going to be a, a, a small landscape strip. Is there really any vegetation that's going to survive?
I mean, I would defer to Shari, but you could put flowers in there, something. I mean, if you look at some of the retailers that we've required, they change out the, the plants or the flowers depending on the season and have something aesthetically pleasing instead of just parking sidewalk building.
And the planters, they, it doesn't even need to be as much upkeep as annuals, you know, you can get perennials in a planter, you know, so if they have the big planters, they certainly could put perennials in and really not have to do much to them, just cut them once in the beginning of the season and then be done with them, so they'll come back.
And above ground planters are acceptable?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, that's what she's referring to.
Just want to make, make sure.
Okay, we'll try to come up with something.
The next one on the parking, you just, because this is a new hearing, just briefly summarize what you explained to us last time. I think talking about your liquid facility was, was useful the last time and the amount of parking spaces they have and how that's adequate, because it, it matches up something comparable to this one.
I believe we handed in a report for Dolan also, or a letter from Dolan, the traffic
Right, so we, currently we have 41 space, parking spaces are proposed where 50 is required. Clearly on the site, there is the ability to add the additional nine spaces, but we feel that it's really not necessary in this particular case. The number of parking spaces is the, in the areas to what AutoZone typically is looking for on their sites. So, if we were to go and add the additional nine spaces, it would just be more impervious that's really not, not warranted and, and further disturbance into the, the area on the east side of the property that we've left alone. So, we would request relief for that. Do you want me to just continue going down?
Yes.
Okay, then number, or letter E about the...
Contribution to the tree fund?
Correct. So, we are not currently providing all the trees that are, are required by the ordinance, so we would, we would request to not have to put all the trees on site and then we would have to contribute to the, the tree fund.
How many trees are you deficient? Or Shari, do you know?
They're referring back to A23, sheet 14, I think it is, the tree removal plan.
Yeah, I had that, they deducted this street trees from the requirement, so we don't allow that. So, I, I have that 41 proposed trees should be deducted from the required total, so the chart needs to be updated. They deducted 44, so, you know, they're close. So, the number they have down is a little over 21,000, so it'd be closer to 22,000.
So, they need to pay for 41 trees?
No, no.
How many trees?
Here, I could do the math for you, hold on. It's 22,200. That's the payment that they'd be required to go to the tree fund.
You know how many trees that represents?
That, that represents 74 trees.
Okay.
So, they're required 115 and, you know, they're planting 41.
You're saying you're deficient 74 trees?
So, that should be indicated on the plan, so then when you go to construct, you know, that, all that information's there and no one has to figure out what it is again.
That has to be on the plan, Tom.
Yep. Okay, and then F is talking about the signage and which we had previously spoken about, we had the one pylon sign and then requesting two wall signs, whereas only one wall sign is permitted. So, we were requesting relief in order to have the second sign installed on the northern, northern facade. It's going to be on the north facade so that when, when people are in the parking lot and they're looking at the building, it improves the aesthetics of the building as well as lets people know what they're going into.
I, I have a question, I'm sorry, just to go back. So, the picture that you have here is in the grays and whites. In any other of your facilities have they had other colors or are they always gray and white?
The, actually, the, the color, the colors normally are more orange and red, so this is...
The facility itself, the building itself.
Yeah, so this, this is, this is not the normal colors for AutoZone. Yeah, the normal colors are, are the, the orange and the reds.
That's your stripes, but I think what the mayor's saying is for the base of, and the base of the building.
The bottom part?
So, the bottom parts. So, I've been in other states and other areas where AutoZone has done beautiful buildings and I guess it's all a matter of opinion, but peaks and earth tones and two tones, we're building from scratch. Quite frankly, I don't understand why your architects not here, no offense, but, you know, you're coming to Howell, you got a plain footprint, that you really can do whatever you want. And it's kind of, and, and I went through this with Walmart, you know, kind of becomes insulting when, and we welcome the business, but why for some reason you can't comply with our ordinance? We just beat an hour to try to figure out architectural. We've seen different architectures. I'm going to request that your architect come to the next meeting and if we can't get it right then, you know, that's a problem, but you have great architects, you have beautiful buildings, you know, I think we can make this work. But we're going back and forth with an engineer who can't make the decision for architectural and can't hear what the board is telling him, how we kind of envision this building to look, especially next to our town hall. I mean, I'm sure you can appreciate that.
Fair comment, I can appreciate it.
I thank you.
Still like to address your, Tom, on the bottom part, I think is what she's addressing, the gray on the bottom?
Correct, the, the typical colors of the AutoZone are not, not the gray, they're more of the, in the reddish and the orange for the, the entire building. That's what they're, that's what the, the typical AutoZone building would look like. So, they've already, they've changed it to, to these colors based on some of the prior discussions that were had.
So, I, I think that I, I, just looking at it personally, it just looks like a big box and it, it's nothing appealing about the facility itself. I wasn't at the previous meeting, so forgive me if I'm, you know, just going over the, the same thing or, but for me, the, when the planning board has, has reviewed other plans that I've been at, they've requested that the, the color scheme be just more appealing to the eye. One, two, I mean, I, I get that you need to have your orange, your AutoZone, you know, the identifier, I totally understand that. But if there's something that you could do to the building similar to what Deputy Mayor said, you know, there's, there are other facilities that have, the, the facade itself is different, a column that comes out where the, you know, the, the header, the, the square, let's say, here has a, a column that comes out, so it kind of brings it out towards the eye, it makes it a little more appealing. So, looking at this, actually, it looks like a truck when I look at it directly this way.
Well, I, Deputy Mayor made it clear, I, I don't, I...
All right, let's just finish.
Know that we need any more time with this.
If we could just finish the last two and then we'd understand.
Come back and, and bring your architect.
I think...
Want to just finish the last couple and then we'll...
Yeah, I think the last two we already addressed, which was the, you know, the, the facade, so it was really just the retaining wall.
Yeah.
Right, and so, letter G, we have the retaining wall that is located, going back to A24, we have a retaining wall located along the northern property line. The retaining wall is due to the existing topography, there, we're required in the narrow, the area, we're, we're trying to keep the building out of the side yard setback and just laying the parking. We get a little close to the property line here and due to, there's a little bit of a berm that goes right on the property line, so we've provided a small retaining wall along the heads of those parking stalls.
Okay, that's it. Do you want to?
Okay, so I think... What I recommend is, what I recommend is a few things. So, first of all, let's find a date and I think that first meeting in August now is not available based upon what I saw tonight, so...
I don't think August 17th is either.
What do we got going on the 17th? Well, 41 Randolph may not go, because I don't think they've had their zoning board interpretation yet. Yeah, so, you know, we'll, we'll see. Really, I don't think, I mean, if everything is buttoned up, I don't think you guys have a, have a, a long hearing, you know, the next one. So, I think we can put it on that day.
August 17th.
Yeah, August 17th. Now, here's what I would recommend before I carry it. I recommend we have a professionals' meeting on July 5th. I think it would behoove you to, you know, come to the professionals' meeting again.
You can't make July 5th, I'm sorry.
Okay, then we'll figure something else out.
August? And it's too late.
Just a week of July 4th on that one.
All right, we have the first Tuesday in August.
That's fine.
Yeah, so I would, and that gives you some time to work on the plan also. So, I would say, you know, Laura's office will coordinate with you on a time to come for that first professionals' meeting in August so that, you know, we can hopefully make this a very expeditious meeting when you come in on the 17th. And then obviously, when you come back on the 17th to have your architect present. So, with that said...
Mr. Chair, if they have the meeting on August 5th, doesn't he have to have the plan submitted 10 days prior to that meeting?
Yeah, he'd need them on the 7th.
Well, that's what we like. The municipal land use law actually only talks about initial submissions, but if you can get them done by August 7th, that would be fantastic. And that gives you, you know, a month and a half to, to, to get it done, which I'm sure you can do. So, the application of AutoZone Northeast LLC SP-1028 will be carried to the board's August 17th, 2017 meeting. There'll be no further notice to property owners, so if you receive the notice in the mail, you will not receive another one. And then, like we said, we will have a professionals' meeting and hopefully on the 17th, everything is just the way you guys want it and we can have a, we can move through it pretty quickly.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Counselor, we got, we got 20 minutes before 10:30 and we've got another case. I don't know if we're going to be able to hear this whole...
I have two cases.
Well, that's, that's the board's prerogative. I'm sure if we hear from Mr. Cohen, he's going to tell us, he's going to be five minutes.
It's the board's consensus, I mean...
We also, Mr. Cohen, yes.
Well, the submission waiver we could hear, but we've got a case, Rosado Howell.
Well, that's up, that's up to the board as to what it wants to do.
Well, is the Bryant Hagerty submission waiver, is that what you're here for, Mr. Cohen?
Well, he's here for both.
Um, no, the Hagerty submission waiver is...
No, it's Wilhelm.
I'm sorry, Wil, Wilhelm, Wilhelm and Rosado.
Literally will take a minute, I mean, that's not really a big issue. This particular, I mean, I, can I swear to you it would be done in 20 minutes? I can't, but I think we get a lot of it done, but obviously it's up to the board as to whether they want to hang out.
I'd like to carry. I, I'd like to carry personally, but I'll take the consensus of the rest of the board.
I would carry. I would carry.
Carry it?
Huh?
Carry it. Carry it?
We'll do the submission waiver.
Yeah, we're going to do the submission waiver right now.
So, case number SP 1035 Joseph Wilhelm, preliminary file, major site plan.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, before we do that, because literally that's going to take a half a second, I have witnesses here that want to, they're going to have to obviously come back. Can we get, just figure out a date and carry the applicant?
We're doing that right now.
Oh, that, okay.
Well, we're looking at, you know, we have the agendas to see when it's...
Okay, because it, okay.
I'm sorry, what's the...
We're not getting it until July 20th. We have line holdings and all that, okay, then this one's off.
We could try for...
And this one here is objectors.
Is it?
Yes, we don't have a first meeting in July.
Oh, okay. Which one has objectors?
This one.
I don't know.
And we just put this one on a little bit more.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah.
We could try to give you July 20th, perhaps you can work it out with the attorney for Lion Holdings as to which one of you wants to go first that night, and then we have L and L, that's a more involved application, so we would put that last. We don't have a first meeting in July.
Yeah, I got that. I guess, sure. See if I can get ahold of that other attorney.
He's tough. All right, so then, the application of, let me just get my file here, Rosano, what's the application name of that?
1035.
Rosano Howell Land LLC.
All right, I got it. The application of Rosano Howell Land LLC, case number SP-1036, be carried to the board's July 20th, is that what you said?
July 20th.
July 20th, 2017 meeting, 7 o'clock here in the main meeting room. If you got notice of the hearing for tonight, you will not receive another notice, and if you want to take a look at any records, you can go to Eileen's office during normal business hours. As I said, no further notice to property owners, and we can make you, we'll figure out, you'll either be first or second.
Thank you.
So with that said, do you want to just roll into Wilhelm?
Sure.
Application of Joseph Wilhelm, seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to demolish an existing home and construct an office building. Premises known as block 78 dot 10, lot 3401, 2 Clayton Row. Laura?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a review letter dated May 30th, 2017. The submission waivers are specifically outlined in item number four, one of which deals with descriptions or deed restrictions affecting the property. But I recommend that certainly be a temporary waiver, because if there's any deed restrictions associated with the property or easements that would be required, we would want those to be recorded.
Well, a submission waiver doesn't mean you don't have to submit it, so, I mean, it's a full submission waiver, but you're just gonna have, it's, we're not gonna require it for completeness purposes, but you just heard, submit it.
And then the next item is checklist item 88, which is profiles and utilities. This is on well water and septic, and there's no extension of public infrastructure, so as a result of that, I take no exception to the granting of that waiver.
Any comments from the board? A motion, please. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the submission waivers to deem the application complete for application case number SP-1035.
Second.
One call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time, chief.
Counselor, any reason to go into executive session?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
No motion to adjourn? Hold, favor?
Aye.
Aye.